Good evening and welcome to Menlo Park Planning Commission meeting. I'll call the meeting to order now and I will briefly call roll. I can see five members on our screen. You can just wave. I think we know we can hear you. So we have Commissioner Barnes. We have Commissioner DeCarty. Cale. Commissioner Tate. And myself, Vice Chair Doran. We don't have our Chair Commissioner Riggs here tonight. And apparently we are also missing Commissioner Kennedy, but we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed. Mr. Pruder, I think you're with us this evening. If you could explain the format of the video conference to start with, I would appreciate that.
Good evening and thank you, Vice Chair Doran. Thank you, planning commissioners and members of the public. And I will be serving as the clerk for the planning commission meeting this evening and just as a general advisory, we ask that the planning commissioners maintain their microphones that's turned on and also have the webcams available when there are questions. And making sure the webcams remain on. And if anyone else is participating during an item, whether that's with a particular applicant team or planning staff member, you would ask that they only have their video and microphones on when necessary. And also for planning commissioners to mute their microphones unless they're requesting to speak or speaking at the time. And I will also be assisting with the public comment period for each item. And that includes a public comment for general comments that are coming up later in this meeting. And at that time, members of the public will have an opportunity to either provide a comment or speak aloud in real time by raising their hands with the hand icon that is on the interface for go-to webinar. And by clicking on that hand-shaped icon, they'll be able to make a comment when the public comment period is possible for either the item or for the general public comment period. And also again, just an additional reminder, please make sure that you turn off your microphones and cameras when necessary at this time. And that will be all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. So we'll turn now to reports and announcements from Ms. Karina. Are we on the planning commission?
Yes, good evening, Vice Chair Doran and planning commissioners. So there's going to be a housing commission meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. And there will be a presentation on the methodology for the regional housing needs allocation. And that may be of interest to the commissioners. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Sandlmeyer? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. We have we have the approval of minutes from October 19th and October 12th. And architectural control on 2494 Sand Hill Road.
Vice Chair, point of order. Yeah, did we skip public comment by any chance?
We did indeed. You're correct. So let's put the consent calendar slide for the moment. And ask for any public comment on matters which do not appear on this evening's agenda. There will be another chance later in the program for public comments on items which are on the agenda. But if anyone has general public comments for matters which are not on this evening's agenda, now is the time. And we'll give a few minutes for people to raise their hand on that. Mr. Pruder, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I am looking through right now and I'm not seeing any hands raised. But I would like to just review one thing with staff. I apologize for this question, but if I could just clarify with staff that it okay, it appears that we do not have any hands raised. If you'd like, I could assist in closing the public comment period for general public comment if you prefer that.
Okay. Let's do that. So we're now to the consent calendar. The minutes from October 12th and 19th in architectural control on 2494 Sand Hill Road. Does anyone have any comments to the minutes or anything they would like to remove from the consent calendar? Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item E3 from the consent calendar.
Okay. Anything else? There are a motion to approve the minutes then.
I've moved to approve both sets of minutes items E1 and E2 as submitted.
Do we have a second for that?
A second.
Mr. Cale, seconds. Very well, if we could have everyone raise their hands if they're in favor of approving the minutes from October 12th and 19th. So we have Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner DeCarty, Commissioner Cale, Commissioner Tate and myself. Vice Chair Doran in favor of approving the minutes. Any votes against? Or none? Any abstentions? There are none. So the minutes are approved, 5-0. Commissioner DeCarty, would you like to explain your issues with 2494 Sand Hill Road?
Yeah, I just had it through the chair, just a couple of questions for staff to understand the need for the building, its design and placement. That's okay?
Certainly.
Mr. Pruder, I think this is yeah, sorry, this is to you. My question is to understand the need for this structure. This is a building that's had a heating and cooling system, must have had it for some time. And it's a significant change to actually expand that unit to now have another essentially structure or building that is on that property and especially in that location. So my question is to understand the need for that building and if the building owners pursued all other avenues for maintaining acceptable climate control for business and occupants of the building.
Yes, thank you for those questions, Commissioner DeCarty. I may defer to the applicant team. But my understanding regarding this particular proposal is that the expansion is necessary due to the modernization that's required for the building's overhaul in respect to the specific climate control needs that they have on site. And so my understanding is they need to upgrade their cooling unit. And I believe my understanding is that they needed to position that outside of the current room because of its sizing and locational constraints. But I'm happy to have our applicant team come on and help explain that a little more if you'd like that.
I think it would be helpful. I'd like to understand if there was looking at alternatives such as energy efficiency improvements or weatherization or ways to be able to control climate. Or if there were different mechanical structures that either could replace in the existing footprint or might have lesser footprint externally. So I'd appreciate that. And if they're best answer that, that would be great.
Sure, I definitely call Ms. Ash Sundar to join by video and audio if that's all right. And she should be able to assist with a brief explanation. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Ash. I'm the architect for this project. I believe we do have the landlord representative as well, Steve Aberley on the call who can give a little background information on the site, but I'd like to state the reason. As Commissioner DeCarty requested, that the existing footprint and the existing units that are there in the current building, 2494, are extremely outdated. And it's in the basement without head clearance and a lot of non-compliance code issues which will be really hard to address to upgrade the new 60-ton unit into the current building. I don't have the specifics of when the 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 past equipment that is existing was installed, but we have Steve on the line. But to have the 60-ton unit, we did explore all the options and ideally from a cost perspective as well, from the landlord's side, it would be in our best interest to have it in the inside the building and just replace the existing unit with a new unit. So we definitely did explore that option first, but as Matt said, we have to take into considerations bringing everything when we're replacing the unit up to the code compliance and the energy efficient compliance as well, which is why we went this route. Steve, would you like to add anything that I missed?
Yeah, just basically the the bigger unit to supply the needs of the tenant. When the tenants, when they did their last TI, they're they really didn't have enough cooling. They put a lot of office in there. We have a lot of windows. And it just, we just, it just couldn't keep up with the demands. When we went with the bigger unit to supply what they really needed would not fit in that basement. So we decided to go with the most efficient cooling tower, which we also have two other cooling towers on the property now. So we're, we're, we have a generic theme going around that we have, this will be our third cooling tower on the property. So it's basically the same thing as what we have on the other.
I appreciate it. And just to clarify, when you did the tenant improvements in the windows, did you use higher, you know, energy efficient windows to be able to take care of the heat gain? Was that put in place at that time?
No. At that time, it was the, it was a tenant bill project. And I don't think the windows, Ash, the windows weren't touched.
Sorry, when this is the TI, I'm sorry, Steve, this was done a long time ago, right? The TI, it wasn't a recent construction.
Yes. And I believe they didn't have enough cooling. And I don't know why. We were involved in it, but you know, the tenant's been complaining for for years now that they just can't get, we just can't cool it. And we've had ACCO engineers out there and they said, just too small. You just not enough air. There's not enough air to get to the unit because it's inside that enclosure in the basement.
I appreciate that and understand that part of it. I guess my last question was just to be clear. They explored and there is no other way to be able to address the the needs for climate control for the tenants. So you you couldn't actually try to reduce the heat that is coming in through those windows. And did you look at that as an alternative to making this improvement?
Yes, we did. We did look at the heat load. We've tried to, we did have a consultant on the window film, the solar window film that we could put on the existing windows and to replace the windows, but just the energy efficiency was would not be met with the current system that's in place, not apart from the fact that it's, there's a lot of code compliance issues with that basement itself from an access standpoint. But the secondary issue is we did the research, the glass that was installed way back when with the new window film that could be applied, but we were not meeting the the needed requirement. And to give a little bit of background on the building, there is a double height lobby which has the glass going all the way from the first floor to the second floor, which brings in the most amount of heat in. So we were looking into what are the options to bring down the heat load from that glass standpoint as well. But we, this was kind of the most efficient way. I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a huge project on the 60-ton unit outside, but we just don't have other options to bring up the cooling in that building right now.
I appreciate it. I just have one more question you might be able to answer, which is, can you see that building from Sand Hill Road, the proposed new building?
I don't believe you can. It's uphill on a very wooded area. And I think we have a Google map sheet on our drawings as well. It's not visible just because Sand Hill, between the building and the property line, it's heavily wooded. So it's, it's not visible, no.
And and we do have, it's a, the enclosure is actually a CMU wall which is sunken down into the hillside about six feet. So only six feet of the front part is actually exposed. So it's, it's kind of like sunken into the hillside. So it's not a huge structure. It's CMU on on sides with a gate in the front.
Awesome. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. I just think it's super important to explore all of these alternative options, the way we are going with our energy use and the types of systems we're putting in place to make sure that they're not just going to be relics and legacy, given that the lifetime of what you're building there. And so I appreciate your answers. I hope you really did fully explore all those other options because it's frustrating to have to have an additional structure put in place, especially given where we're going with the alternatives these days. But I completely respect and understand and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a quick question and I wasn't going to pull the item. So thanks to Commissioner DeCarty for pulling it for me. This may have been the staff report. Is there any information on how much noise a 60-ton cooling unit puts out?
Yes, so we did have the mechanical rep look at the the noise report. We, I understand the code requirement is 50 decibels at 50 feet at night and 60 decibels during the day. So we are adding water silencer and sound distributor attenuators to the unit to bring it down to the code compliance level. So yes, we are meeting the code compliance with this unit.
So it's another way to say that it's noisy enough, but you have to add some mechanical units or devices to bring the noise down?
For the daytime, yes. It's going to be switched off at night, so it's not going to produce any noise at night at all. But for the daytime, we are adding the required requirements to bring it down to the allowable decibel level.
Okay, my concern is just the residences and if it's off at night, that helps a lot. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If I may through the Vice Chair.
Can't hear you.
Yes, sorry, I think you're muted, Vice Chair. Sorry, Vice Chair. Still can't hear you.
Switching cameras and be switching mics. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna go with a different camera. Camera's built in mine. So, Mr. Pruder.
Yes, sorry, slight confusion there. I was just going to bring to your attention and to the commission's attention, the fact that we have a condition of approval that has been added into the project's recommended actions, attachment A. And it specifically refers to a noise study being required prior to building permit issuance. And so just to clarify, what the applicant is providing in their remarks right now is indicating that there is an intention to meet the noise requirements. At the time of the staff report publication, we were not completely certain on the exact, precise noise specifications. And so I just wanted to clarify with you, with the commission, that you're aware that we have a noise study we are requiring as a condition of approval. And just wanted to make sure that that has been clarified as well. The applicant is again stating that they are shutting off the device during the nighttime hours. But I'd also like to clarify that the specific 50-decibel requirement, it would need to be demonstrated through the noise study based on the condition of approval we provided.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. Does anyone else have any further questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion if there's no further discussion. Okay, Chair will make a motion to approve the architectural control of 2494 Sand Hill Road. Do you have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Barnes seconded the motion. If all in favor, raise your hand, please. So we have in favor Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Cale, Commissioner Tate and myself opposed. Do we have any abstentions? Commissioner DeCarty is abstaining. So the motion carries four in favor and one abstention. Thank you. So we will move back to the, move on to the public hearing section of our agenda tonight. I can ask Ms. Sandlmeyer, I'm actually not completely clear on the order. Do we call for public comments before the presentation by the applicant or after? I think it's after, but I want to make sure that I get it right. Do we have Ms. Sandlmeyer?
Yeah, so the public comments are usually I think after the, after the presentation makes sense. I hope that.
Very well. Thank you, it does. So the next item on the agenda is a use permit at 333 Pope Street. To request for use permit revision for an exterior modifications to a previously approved news, new two-story, single-family residence and attached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U single-family urban residential zoning district. Proposed modifications include changes to window styles and locations, addition of a second-story window, modifications to the roof form, a slight increase in floor area. I see we have Mr. Lee. Are you representing the applicant this evening?
I am the owner. Hello, Commission. Good evening. I'm the owner.
Good evening. Would you like to tell us about the application, please?
Yes. Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Yui Tek Lee. I, with my wife Joanne Lynn, have been owners of 341 Terminal Avenue since 2013. Prior to that, I lived with my parents around the corner in the newer development on Hamilton Avenue from 2007 to 2013. I'm an engineer and Joanne is an oncology nurse previously at UCSF and currently at Stanford. She takes care of very sick cancer patients. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lee, you're at 341 Terminal Avenue?
Ah, yes.
Yeah, sorry, we're not on that item yet. We are on 333 Pope Street.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought it was the second.
But I would like to stay in order with our agenda.
Oh, sure, sure. Absolutely. Sorry about that.
We will get to you next.
Sure. Sorry about that. My apologies.
Do we have anyone representing 333 Pope Street?
Yes, we do. I just want to say that I do not have anything to add to the staff report. We do have Chris Coomer here to represent the, he is the applicant and he's also here with the owners as well.
Thank you. Mr. Coomer, would you like to make some remarks?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, commissioners for grinding it out here for eight months doing this online. And I'd also like to thank Chris Turner for his hard work on our project. And I know it's not hard for these guys, or it's not hard, it's very hard for these guys, all of us to work at home. So thank you to Chris. So my name is Chris Coomer of CKA Architects here in Menlo Park. This project was previously approved unanimously by this commission in October of 2019. And the design was conceived as an early Californian mission-style home that's reminiscent of some of the earliest homes here in the area. And also some of our favorite buildings like the Allied Art Skilled. And then over the last year, as the design has evolved, various revisions have been made. And on aggregate, staff felt like the project needed to come back for your review based on three types of revisions. So the first one is inevitable project development. So let's see. If I can, I can share, I can show you. Thank you. Can just kind of point out some of these things. So as far as inevitable project development, we had items like the roof surrounding the tower elements that changed for better roof drainage. So on a roof plan here, we can see that this roof plan was amended to this one just for positive roof drainage. So that's, there are other things like that, but that's one type of improvement that was made. And the second type was things changed for improvements in function. So we have a larger ADU kitchen and we have a reorganized ADU bathroom. And these resulted in the movement of one window on the exterior. Other things in this category would be the addition of some skylights for better natural light. And the removal of a folding wall at the back of the house as well. So some, let's see. So here's the second floor, oh, well. Here's the second floor plan comparison. And it's the ADU here that was rearranged a little bit, resulting in a window changing that was rearranged from this original configuration. And then the third type of improvement are aesthetic improvements. This includes changing some of the ironwork design that can be seen here. Sorry, that could be seen here at the entry where this iron screen was changed in size to to this. And some revisions in window dividers for better view from the inside and better consistency from the outside. So all told, we hope these enhancements are stylistically consistent with a project that was unanimously approved previously. And with that, I'm just happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Coomer. Do we have any questions? Mr. Cale.
Thank you. I have a few questions about the changes. What is the 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 lentils, the decorative wood lentils? Have some of those disappeared from the previous approved project?
Thank you. Yes, that's correct. The one here above the window on the second floor at the front of the house has been removed.
Can we get that back?
You guys are the bosses. You can have what you want. You know, it wasn't a very important piece from our client's point of view. And so it was removed. But you know, if that was a deal breaker for you folks, I think they'd be happy to include that.
Personally, I feel it helps to tie the the different openings together. So I would like it. The loss of the grids, I think, is a big component. What was the reason for that?
You know, some of that came down to sort of technical issues with window manufacturing and complexity, particularly on this front one. And some of it was just a heightened understanding. You can see here that a lot of these older homes did have this type of window that didn't have the grids. So to sort of enhance the views out, in this case to a courtyard, in our case, also to the front courtyard.
Is that a big cost difference to do that?
You know, it has a significant cost difference. It also just gives a better connection from that space to that front courtyard, which was important to our client.
Okay, I personally would like to keep that, but that's Okay, I, I personally would like to keep that, but that's, that's just me. The, the door that was added where the, from the garage, that's all, there's, there's no grids on that either, it looks like. It's hard to see.
The side-facing door under the stairs, is that, that the one?
Yes.
Let's see. So yeah, that, that's correct. There are no grids on that. That's right. Here.
Is there a reason why there's no grids on that one?
Yeah, I mean, it's not visible from the front. You kind of need to enter the, the property and look underneath the stairway to see that one.
Okay. And then there's some, some decorative grates that were at ironwork that is added over the windows. I think that's, that's a nice touch. I noticed those are, some of those are awning windows. Are those going to be able to be operable behind the ironwork?
It's a good question. Yeah, there, you know, if the, they're just for slight ventilation, right? So you should be able to crack those awnings slightly and then open them. But that's a, you know, and some of these windows, very few manufacturers make some that open in as well.
Okay. And last question's kind of hard to see, but comparing the front elevation, I noticed that the roof, like you mentioned, is, is different. And it's, the, the changes are set far back, so I don't think it's going to matter too much. But I just noticed in the previous approval, there was three little vents, probably a little clay vents above the window, and it looks like it's a little bit different in the lower or the proposed drawing. Is that a?
That's right. Those are those clay stacked clay tiles again, just in a different configuration. So in like a little pyramid configuration as opposed to the, the holes.
Some of those can, they, they are pre-manufactured and they look pre-manufactured, so just be careful trying to spec those.
No, thank you. This would be the mission tiles that are kind of cut and set in there.
Okay. And my last item is not a, with a question, but if possible, there's a, a lot of foundation vents facing the street and some of those could probably be relocated to the sides. I think that would just help the front elevation.
Oh, let's look at it. I, I think most of them, we just have two here, I believe, and then these ones, right?
Yes.
And that's because of the flood zone. So we're really limited on, on what we can do. We got to get those in to let the supposed floodwaters through.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Coomer at this time? Hearing none, I will open it up to public comments. Mr. Turner, I believe you're running public comments for this one?
If I may, Vice Chair Dorn. Yes, we are playing musical planning commission clerks, but I am going to be the planning commission clerk for the rest of tonight's meeting. So no more changes. But just to clarify, again, as a reminder for any members of the public who would like to provide a public comment at this time, please click the hand icon that is on the interface for the go-to webinar meeting, and we could assist you in allowing you to speak for your public comment that you'd like to provide. At the moment, I'm not seeing any hands raised. But I'm happy to close that if you would prefer to do so. Vice Chair Dorn.
Let's give him a few seconds to raise their hand.
Sounds great.
Okay, you're still seeing none?
Still seeing none. I can confirm no hands are raised at this time. So if you'd like, you could close the public comment period. No comments at the moment.
I'll close the public comments at this time. Like to bring it back to the virtual DLS for further comments from the Commissioners. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. In looking at the proposed changes, whether it's a matter of aesthetics, whether it's a matter of the window revisions, those are all perfectly fine with me. It's certainly within keeping with the original aesthetic. The addition of the additional square footage is within the development standards, the addition of the window. All these things seem reasonable and are natural occurrences in the progression of a project and in the evolution of a project. So for those reasons and due to my comfort with the overall aesthetic of the project, I make a motion to approve the use permit revision for the staff report.
Commissioner Dale?
Uh, I'd like to make a second with one minor change, if it's okay. I think overall, it's, it's a, it's a, all the changes are acceptable. There are some things that make it better and some things that make it maybe not so much better. I think the, the loss of the grids is unfortunate, but I'm, I don't have a problem doing or keeping that. The one change I would like to ask the maker to amend is to keep all the decorative wood lentils that were approved in the previous projects for continuity.
So help me with that, Commissioner Kair. Show me what plan page, where, where should I look for that?
If you look on sheet eight, 3.0, which is the one that's up here, the, on the upper drawing above the garage door, there's a pair of windows with a wood lentil over them.
Right.
That's gone on the window, on the drawing below that. But there is one that's over the garage door that is, is still there. So I, I think, I, I can't remember if there's other locations where, where the lentils disappeared, but at least in this location, I think it should remain.
Okay, I can see these if I check my plans. Hold on. Okay, so the, the upper one was in the original that went away, and the one below looks more highlighted, but there always was one above the garage. So the garage didn't change. It, there's a, there's a difference in how it's darkened in there. Well, let me ask the applicant through the chair if it's permissible.
Yes, please proceed.
And I, I believe that Commissioner Kair did ask this question, but I'll ask it again. The, the wood, and I'm sorry, it's called a lento? Is that what it's called?
Yes.
A lento. I, I, so the wood lento on top of the garage, although it's shaded differently in the proposed elevation versus the original use permit, it's the same thing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's the same thing. It's, you know, this device is to sort of show the support of weight. So it makes a lot of sense on that first floor because it's carrying a lot of weight over a big opening. In our view, it makes a little less sense on the second floor, in this case, because it's not carrying so much visual, visual weight. And that's part of the reason for the removal.
But however, so I will say, I am, I do see some symmetry in that, and I am sympathetic to Commissioner Kair's assertion on that. So to the applicant, I believe you signaled earlier that that would be something you'd be okay adding back in. Is that a?
We certainly can work with you on this. I think, you know, it's important for us to get the project moving forward, and, you know, that's not a deal breaker.
Great. Okay, so I appreciate Commissioner Kair's input. I'll accept that as a condition to the approval. That's fine with me.
Okay, um, before I call for a vote on, on it, I would like to say my own views. I, I like this design very much. It was originally submitted to the Planning Commission. I think that a number of these changes are really in the wrong direction. And I certainly agree with Commissioner Kair about the grid on that front window. But it's in view of the fact that we have a motion before the commission, and it seems that some of the Commissioners are possibly less hardline on these views than I am. I'm going to proceed to the vote on the motion to approve the application as submitted with the exception of, are we talking about only the one lentil over the window over the garage being restored or all the lentils?
Yes, I think there's some, yes, and there's some on the back, but the window, the door has changed in the back, so I'm just going to ask for the front window.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the application as submitted with the restoration, the exception of the restoration of the lentil on the window over the garage in the front elevation.
Permission, Commissioner Dorn, may I add a comment?
Yes, please.
I apologize. I know you were in mid-call and promotion. I, I want to add that I, I I do think that the removal of the gridding is not aesthetically from my aesthetic, necessarily a positive direction, but I'm countering that against the applicant's preference. And I, I feel compelled to allow preference as it relates to someone's architectural style. So for that reason, I'm comfortable with the changes that they're making because it is their, there is their personal preference. So I wanted to add that for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Do we have any other comments from the commission before we proceed to a vote? Hearing none, Commissioner Card.
I, I just briefly want to echo that I appreciate the conversation. I understand the differences, but find myself aligned with Commissioner Barnes and his assessment on this project.
Thank you. So this time, I'd like to call for votes. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise their hands. So we have Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner DeCarty, Commissioner Kair, Commissioner Tate, and myself. We have five in favor. Only five of us present. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Coomer.
Thank you.
So we will now move to consideration of 341 Terminal Avenue. So use permit, a request for use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence and accessory dwelling unit, ADU, a substandard lot with expected width in the R1U, single-family urban residential zoning district. I now see after reading that description, I may have caused the confusion earlier, so I apologize for that. Do we have any further comments from the city staff on this application before we proceed to the applicants?
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening. There are no updates to the staff report at this time, but I am available to answer questions.
Thank you. So we would like to hear from the applicant or the applicants, whichever order you guys would like to speak. Please proceed.
Sure. Sorry about the earlier snafu. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, I'm the owner. My name is Yui Tek Lee. I, with my wife Joanne Lynn, have been the owners of 341 Terminal Avenue since 2013. Prior to that, I lived with my parents right around the corner in the newer development on Hamilton Avenue from 20, 2007 to 2013. I'm an engineer. My wife is an oncology nurse currently at Stanford. She takes care of cancer patients and their families. This is our second application for a, actually, it's a revision of a previously approved use permit on the same property. The first time we applied for the use permit, the commission approved our design, so thank you for that. However, due to my own relative inexperience in dealing with the construction industry, we had unfortunately fallen victim to the dishonesty of our prior, of our previous designer, who was actually introduced to us by a friend, no less. We wasted a lot of time and some money, but on the bright side, I see it as a learning experience. Since the last approval, state laws governing secondary units have changed quite a bit. And to me, it's become a blessing in disguise. Our current licensed architect, Alex Chen, is a night and day difference in professionalism and work ethic. And you can see him in, he's here with us today. He helped, he's, has helped us maximize the sizes of the two structures of, of our primary and secondary units while making the spaces functional and aesthetically pleasing, at least for us. At the time of our first approval, our two boys were two years and six weeks old. Currently, they are four and two, so quite a bit of time has passed. The current house remains as a constant reminder of the ordeal that we went through with the previous designer. So it is our hope that our design for this application, for this revision, can be approved quickly so that we can move forward with the project and enjoy living in the new home with our boys. And with that, I will turn the virtual mic over to my architect, Alex, and he will describe the changes, the revisions made to the previous permit.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Alex. I'm an architect representing this project. In, in light of the new ADU law that's giving us the, you know, the flexibility of building a 800 square feet and then, which does not count towards the overall FAL and which played in favor of the homeowners. So, and that's why, that's one of the reasons that we come into revising this project to maximize the primary residence to, close to the max FAL, which is, I think right now, we are with 35, 35, 137 or something like that square feet for the main house. And the ADU is 798 square feet. And then that is the main change for this application revision to the previous approved CUP. And also that in terms of size, that's a change. And then the second change will be to, we raise the main building. You know, so that we can have the first floor 10 feet sitting height, second floor 9 feet sitting height, with a total building height about like 27 and 6 inches, which is still below the allowable daylight planes and max height allowed. So, and then the third change to the project is to the roof. The roof have changed. We have simplified the roof structure to make it more constructible and less costly. However, we're still keeping the multiple roof ridge line that adds interest to the street view. And then the fourth major change to this project is we have stressed the garage, make it 30, I think it's 35 feet deeper deep in comparing to the previous approved standard garage depth, like 24 feet, which in resolved in subsequently to the stress, we have pushed the building back furthermore away from the, from the street, which will reduce the massing impacts to the, from the street view. And then, you know, I think, I think that those, those are the four main changes for this application to the previous approved CUP. And, well, we, we added the square footage increase. We added into the second story mostly, we're adding an office, you know, and we added a lounge, you know, in light of the new norm that we're working from home and homeschool. The, my client expressed the desire to have, you know, bigger, bigger house and, and, and office of his own. So those are the main changes. And we are, we're open for any suggestions and questions.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commission or the architect? Commissioner Dale?
Thank you. You, you just talked about the garage getting larger. It's inside clearance is over 33 feet, which helps to make the garage very prominent. What, what's the reason for why it's 33 feet deep when 20 feet is the minimum?
The reason for that is my client wants to have, you know, The reason for that is my client wants to have, you know, partial of the garage become a, a workshop area as well. And, and also to be able to have any flexibility to part, you know, maybe an additional car in there.
Okay, something that might help reduce that prominence is changing that front gable, the large front gable over the garage into a hip that would match the, the hips on the second floor. And then the, the entry would just be a gable. Are you open to changing the hip, the, the garage roof to a hip instead of a gable?
Yes.
Oh, that, let me answer. I, I'm not sure what a hip looks like. So I, I can go over this with my, with Mark Tech later and just to get an idea of how it would actually look. But we're certainly open to suggestions from the commission.
Okay, just real quickly, hip is what the second floor is doing, that the roof slopes back from the street.
So it looked like a, yeah, so it looked like a triangle, but you know, tilted. So that's the hip roof.
Okay, okay, I see it.
Commissioner, do we have to have the answer now or would you be, be able to come back and once I inform my client a little better about this new design?
It would help if you could answer now. There's no requirement that you have to answer now. Maybe I could, I have a few more questions. You could still think about this, maybe. Regarding the windows, I see in the window detail that there's some wood on the exterior, but in the staff report and in the elevations, it looks like it's a foam trim. What, what is the trim for the windows?
Well, we, we moved to change it to foam trim. My apologies for not changing that call out on that window detail, that window cut section. But the, for the, for the exterior, it's gonna be the foam trim, but then the interior will be, will be wood, but you know, it's not, it's not gonna be seen by the public.
So I, I see vinyl windows and a foam trim. Is, is there in sliders as well, which I know the owner has made some comments about that they don't operate very well. I would just ask to reconsider that and if you would consider using the wood trim. Just because it, it will make the, it'll make the project more attractive. So my question is, are you open to not doing the foam and doing a wood trim around the windows and doors?
Uh, yes, I, we, we'd be open to that, certainly.
Okay. And last question is about the height. So unfortunately, you're in the flood zone, which raises you up two feet. You also have ten-foot ceilings and nine-foot ceilings. It would, and you're, you're close to the maximum. It would help reduce the, the apparent mass of the house if we could reduce some of those ceiling heights, maybe six inches per floor or more, or is that something you would be open to?
Uh, we have a strong preference for taller ceiling heights. The reason why we partially, the reason why we raised it a little higher was also due to the flood zone consideration. It's in the last, maybe within the last five to seven years, it's gone up. It seems to be constantly going up, so we, I wanted to have the house raised a little bit higher just to take that into consideration.
Well, the, the flood zone is setting the finished floor, the ceiling heights have really nothing to do with the finish, the flood zone.
Right, right. We, yeah, but we do have a strong preference for the taller ceiling heights. Previously, it was nine feet on the first floor and I blew eight feet on the second floor. And we felt that this second, this revision was a chance for us to design the house to the, the way that we really would like it to be. The, the first time we did it, it was more of a rushed consideration for us in terms of the ceiling height.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions from the commission? Hearing none, I would like to now call for public comment. Do we have Mr. Pruder back?
Evening, vice chair and planning commissioners. Again, just as a reminder, this is the public comment period and members of the public are welcome to raise their hand. And if they choose to raise your hand icon, small hand on the interface. We will allow you to make your public comment and I will wait for a moment. I don't see any comments at the moment, but we can wait a little. Just to make sure that everyone has a chance if they'd like to speak.
Yeah, let's give them just a minute in case people are looking for the icon on their screen. Okay, then we still have no voters?
Yes, that is correct, vice chair. And so I'd like to close the public comment period. I'm seeing no comments at this time. Your hands.
Yes, I'd like to close public comments and we are back to the eyes for further discussion. Do we have any officials who would like to comment on the application? Mr. Kale.
Thank you. So in general, I think it's, it's approvable. I, I do tend to find it rather massive and part of that is unfortunately due to the flood zone. I would love to see it reduced in height a little bit, but that's not really a, a deal killer. I think the roof design is vastly improved from what it was before, so that helps a lot. I was inclined to vote against it, although the, the, what changes my mind is the two changes that the applicant is willing to make. One is that the, the garage roof can be made into a hip roof, which will help reduce that rather prominent garage. And the second is the change to wood, wood window trim rather than the foam window trim. There's other changes I'd love to make, but if I could, I'd be happy with just those two. So I can make a motion to, unless someone else wants to jump in?
Actually, I would like to clarify. You'd also talked about the vinyl windows with the applicant as opposed to wood windows. Is the application or vinyl windows right now?
I see vinyl windows. And there's sliders too.
I would just say that vinyl windows are something that we think be consistently by persuading people against in the middle of our. I'm very happy to see the flexibility on the foam trim. But I would like to ask the applicants if they would be willing to use wood windows in place of vinyl windows.
It would be agreeable to the commission. We can select for the previous permit, I believe we were, it was suggested to select simulated divided light windows. We would be open to select those types of windows if that would, and while remaining with the vinyl windows, if that would work for the commission.
Mr. Kale.
Um, I, I didn't even ask for the change to wood windows. I, I thought that might have been pushing it. I see in the previous application, the, the commission tried to talk the applicant out of the sliders, but those are still here. I, in response to the grids, I would not opt for the grids with this, I think. Especially in a vinyl window, that would just make it look cheap. So I would say no to the grids. I would also ask if we could change to wood windows. But I, I don't know. Well, others ask, can we change those to wood windows?
We would be open to the suggestion. I would probably have to, I guess, from a bout, from a budget point of view, it's probably not too much more in terms of extra cost. So we, I think we would be open to that suggestion.
Commissioners, may I add? Is fiberglass window be acceptable? Fiberglass is, is nicer looking, but is less maintenance required? You know, would that, would that be, commission is open to that instead of having a window which is more costly and maintenance required?
Mr. Kale.
I would say that fiberglass are more, almost the same as the vinyl windows. So the answer would be no to that. If you're concerned about maintenance, the wood windows generally come with either a vinyl or an aluminum exterior. And I'd say ninety percent of the windows sold do have that exterior for, for, to reduce the maintenance.
Do we have any other commissioners? Commissioner Barnes?
So to the chair, may I to Commissioner Kale?
Please.
I apologize. Can you just give me a window one-on-one? My relationship to windows is you've got a window and you've got, for instance, in my house, I've got aluminum clad, right? So I've got the cladding on the outside. I've got the wooden, wood interior part of it. When you are referencing wood windows, are you being prescriptive for what the exterior finishes, what, what's on the outside or not?
No, just the frame, the actual construction of the window.
Okay.
And to be honest, it's hard to tell from the outside whether it's a wood window with aluminum or fiberglass cladding or a vinyl window. It's just a higher quality window in general when it's a wood window.
And then when, for instance, we get other projects that come through, like Thomas James, for instance, who's a prolific developer in the community. Brings forward window systems. My recollection is that they are fiberglass. Is there, is there a fiberglass that seems to work for them that would or would not work for, for this situation?
You're correct. They, I always ask them if they will upgrade to wood and they generally decline and stay with the, the vinyl or the fiberglass windows. And just going back to my earlier comment, it is hard to tell from the outside what the construction of the window is. So I was very happy just to get rid of the foam and get a wood, an actual wood trim around there, which will help a lot. So if they stay vinyl or fiberglass, I think that would be okay. Ideally, they would be a higher quality wood window.
And there's no such thing as a fire, with a wood, a wood window with fiberglass cladding. Is that not a product?
There, there's a, there's some proprietary materials that are like that. It's not always aluminum. They so do have a, there's a name for it, but it's a, a it's a fiberglass finish basically. So the answer is yes, that is available.
Okay. And then lastly, when we, when you, when you reference quality for is the insulation better with the wood window or what's, what's the primary difference in the benefit to homeowner? Is it aesthetics? Is it, you know, how long the windows last? Is it energy efficiency? What's the, what's the trade-off that you get when you get wood?
You're, you're getting beyond my, my knowledge here, but I understand that they will last longer. The higher quality and the energy efficient is also increased.
Got it. So through the chair back to, to the applicant, if you'd remind me where, where, where did we leave off? What's, where, are you guys willing to go to the wood window?
Uh, we would consider it. I have, I don't know. I have to talk to my wife to see and get how agreeable she is as well. She is currently indisposed with my two boys right now.
And I would think that the, I guess in the interest of just equity, if, if, if we see a lot of fiberglass and that tends to come through, I would have to set predisposition to say if these guys want to do fiberglass too, I, I would have to be okay with that for, for my, for my standpoint. But I do want to talk to another point and this is again back to Commissioner Kale. The height of the buildings, I do see it's a twenty-seven point seven on the height. You know, the, the applicant is maxed out on their square footage. In addition to that, you know, obviously adding the ADU square footage as well. Your proposal for reducing the height. It was a foot overall, so it would reduce from twenty-six, seven to twenty-seven, seven?
And that was my wish, yes.
And, and from a, from a, what, what happens when you take it down a foot from, from a street perspective?
Uh, the apparent mass of the building is reduced. You know, a few inches is not going to be much of a difference, but a foot will make a difference and more than a foot will make a better or a stronger difference.
And then where would that come from? What, what play height versus second?
I would propose half and half, but ideally you would take it all from the second floor just because there's a lot of second floor wall visible from the street and dropping that whole second floor foot would make a big difference.
And that play height in the second floor would be what, if they dropped it?
It would go from nine feet to eight feet.
And if they, and if they remain at nine and nine, the current height would remain the same, twenty-seven, seven?
It's nine and ten right now. The first floor is ten.
Okay, so they could directly do a nine and nine. I'm sensitive to not going to eight feet on the second floor because I think that is low. But before I do that, I will, I want to see if any other commissioners have any other appetite for the, for reduction in height, given the size of this structure. You know, on this very narrow parcel in this area. Curious. Yes, sir.
If I may, you just, the last thing you said was taking it all out of the first floor ceiling, going from a nine second to a ten first to a nine and a nine. And I think that would be a mistake. I think the idea is to get the height out of the second floor as much as we can. So at a minimum, I'd say six from the upper floor and six from the lower floor. Not, not twelve from the lower floor, just to clarify.
I'll leave it there and see if any other commissioners have any other appetite for reduction of the, the height of the, the structure.
I just want to first note for the record that we have Chair Riggs joining the meeting now. I think Chairman, I think I'll continue to chair for the purposes of this, this matter and then I'll hand it over to you. Once we've taken a vote on this matter, it makes the most sense. Commissioner McCarty.
Yeah, I'm conscious of equity and equitable treatment across property owners. I've said this before in other instances and I'll reference back on this, that the reason we are seeing this here is because the lot is substandard for width. But otherwise the lot is big enough and the proposed project conforms to every other requirement. I, it was proposed by the city staff to be approved as presented to us. And I will make a leap of assumption, which means that similar projects on a standard lot would be approved as is. So I believe it's a high bar for us to ask a property owner to make major adjustments. Especially if they're not directly related to the reason why we're seeing it, which as Commissioner Barnes just pointed out, is a substandard lot width. And in this, I would be inclined to support the project as submitted. Not getting into the details about the windows or about the hip versus the gable. or about the hip versus the gable on the garage because of the equitable treatment with other property owners. This is irrespective of my personal preference or that I, you know, would agree with the comments made that it might be an improved project, certainly could make his recommendations. But it's difficult for me to see unless it is directly related to a hardship imposed. And in this instance, with a narrow lot, look to the neighbors. And from the materials, it looks like the neighbors have been made well aware of the project, have signed saying that they've seen and had an opportunity to engage with the owner and the applicant here. So that's where I am on this.
So I would just like before I, one of the other commissioners, I'd like to interject my own comments here. I think that I agree with a good deal of Mr. Cardy's observations. In particular, with respect to the plate heights. That is the condition that is most impacted by. I understand that. But this application does conform with all the regulations given with its lot and it conforms with the daylight requirements. The highest part of the roof is only on the very center line, the peak of the roof. And the rest of it's well within the daylight. I believe that, you know, higher plate heights and higher ceilings are very much, you know, the trend and it's what people want. If they're going to tear down a house and build a new house to live in, I think people want a house that has higher ceilings and more to be volume. I think it's important. I think we should respect those. I think it makes our community more attractive. It has housing of the type that buyers today demand more. I will take issue, I guess, with Commissioner DeCarty on the question of the windows. I think I agree with Commissioner Kael on that. I don't like to see the styro covered foam. I think it does detract from the overall appearance of the community, even though I suppose it's allowed by the building regulations. So I think I'm with Commissioner DeCarty on that one. As far as the windows, given that we've approved many projects with fiberglass windows, I think if, if the applicant did want to use fiberglass, I would feel like I would need to support that. I would like to see something other than vinyl. I can't recall projects that we've approved that had vinyl windows. It's an issue with every application I can recall. With that, I think we had some other commissioners that wanted to speak. Commissioner Kael?
Thank you. To Commissioner DeCarty's point, I hear what you're saying completely about being equitable. But unfortunately, that's not the system we're set up with. We're given some projects to review and others not to review. So I think our job is to hold these projects up to the highest standards that we can for the city of Menlo Park, and that's how I approach it. With regard to the plate height, I think because of the lot is narrow, more narrow than what a standard lot width is, that's particularly tied to the height of the building and the mass of the building and how we want to, how we want this new structure to fit into the city. So I, if it was up to me, I'd say we should have design review for all projects in Menlo Park, not just ones that are on substandard lots. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes?
And I will also add that by definition, when a use permit is triggered, in this instance, you've got a second story on a house in a substandard lot by width. The community has determined that that's something which is discretionary as it relates to what the planning commission looks at. So it is, the planning commission is set up to look at these. And then I think the dividing line becomes what's personal preference. For instance, what we saw on the previous project, which was a matter of divided lights versus what potentially could be deleterious to the neighborhood in terms of mass and structure. And I think that is actually applicable to this situation because this is a massing issue within a neighborhood on a narrow lot. So I think it's absolutely within the purview. It may not be the preference of this particular commission tonight, but I think it's absolutely what we're here to look at. And I think each of us look at it, whether it's personal preference of the applicant or whether it's something that needs to be taken in the context of development within the neighborhood. So it certainly is within the purview of this commission.
Commissioner Kate, did you want to speak?
No, that's okay.
Oh, the applicant would like, let's let the applicant time.
I just want to mention that my neighbors were actually very enthusiastic about our design. I mentioned very specifically about the mass of the building and their privacy, if whether, you know, the height of the building would intrude on their privacy. And none of my neighbors had voiced any concerns. And I think that moving the front, increasing the front setback of the house of the primary unit, helps to mitigate some of the perception of mass from the street view.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty, did you want to speak?
Yeah, this is actually a very helpful discussion. Just briefly, I completely agree with Commissioner Barnes. It's absolutely within our purview. This is what we're here for. So that if my previous comment indicated otherwise, that wasn't my intent. And then to Commissioner Kael's comments, which I completely respect, but just to clarify that it is how I understand best able to work with an inequitable system and structure, as you characterize it, that we are working within, that we see some and we don't see others. And I appreciate your point that if it was up to you, we would see all of them. But within this structure, I was simply pointing out that it feels important that we have an opportunity to address that inequity with how we adjudicate in these particular instances where we absolutely do have discretion. And that, just to clarify, that was the point I was trying to make to the comments from Commissioners Kael and Barnes.
Any further comments from the commission? Well, hearing none. I would like to make a motion to approve the application with the following revisions. That wood trim be substituted for the foam trim on the windows. Hip roof be used over the garage in place of the gable. That either wood or fiberglass windows be used as opposed to vinyl. And otherwise, approve the application as submitted. Do you want to second that? Commissioner Kael?
I'd like to second that and I appreciate the revisions. Just want to clarify that the wood trim around the windows does not necessarily need to be a stained trim. It could be a painted trim.
Okay.
So any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. So those in favor, please raise your hands. You have Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Kael, and Commissioner Doran. So you have three votes in favor. Those opposed? Commissioner Tate and Commissioner DeCarty. So the motion is carried three to two.
Point of order, Mr. Vice Chair?
Really?
If I vote on this, as a commissioner who is present, it will be to abstain. So one might want to verify whether the three votes can carry.
Alimentary question. Ms. Sandomeyer, do you have guidance for us on that question? Can Chair Riggs vote, given that he wasn't here for the entire proceeding?
I would have to check with the city attorney to know. Absolutely sure, but I believe since he wasn't there for the whole item, he would be considered absent. That would make sense to me.
Okay, so with the asterisk that we may have to revisit depending what the city attorney says. Before I, you know, Commissioner Barnes, would I say something?
Yeah, just another previous, I'm sorry, the previous guidance that I've always been given as it relates to a commissioner joining once an item has begun is that that commissioner cannot vote. It's been the guidance that I've been given before, just as a note.
Yeah, that seems logical to me. And in the absence of any authority to the contrary, I think we'll take that position. So the motion carried three to two. And with that, I would like to hand the gavel over to Chair Riggs, since he's now with us.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doran. Our next project would be 1285 Middle Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story residence and construct a new two-story single-family residence on a substandard lot with respect to width in the R1S single-family zone. Ms. Khan, do you have any additional comments to make on the project?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair. No, staff does not have any updates to the staff report.
All right, thank you. I think we'll go ahead and ask the applicant to make a presentation at this time. If there is a presentation, Mr. Terrell? We need audio for Mr. Terrell.
So my name is Kate Horace. I'm the wife of Frederick Dervis. And Andrew is using Jackie Terrell's account. We can't hear you, Andrew.
Sorry, this is, so you can hear me now. My name's Andrew Young. I'm the architect with Young &amp; Warwick Architects. And Jackie is joining us. She's in our office, but she's not presenting. So basically, good evening, planning commissioners, city staff and attendees. I'd like to thank Fatim Khan for all her assistance in getting this project before you this evening and for the thoroughness of the staff report. I believe the report wonderfully summarizes all the design aspects of Fred and Kate's new home as well as the conformance of the project to all the city zoning, ordinances, design guidelines and building codes. I'm embarrassed to say that we have been working on this new home with Fred and Kate for over four years since June of 2016. And we submitted our first application a year later in 2017. The project was placed on hold as Fred and Kate started a family. And we submitted officially with plans before you on December 5th of 2019. So COVID has been disruptive for all of us and tragic for so many. And this project has been one of the casualties of these times. Fred and Kate have been blessed with two daughters in the time that we have been developing their new home and would love to be able to expedite the completion of this project through the city so that they can start the construction of their new home as soon as possible. It seems that these days, no projects are easy and all the city, and all the city processing and reviews take so much longer than we would hope. The project primarily requires planning commission review of the substandard lot with of 67 where 80 feet is required. And yet the far bigger issue has been for us, the process that Fred and Kate had to go through for the removal of the large ash tree on the property. We spent perhaps almost a year working with, working with planning staff and the city arborist Christian Bonner towards getting approval for the tree removal. Some of the time has been due to the complexities of COVID. However, it is unfortunate Fred and Kate have been prevented from developing their property for such some time. I would be happy to discuss the architecture of the new home. And in respect for all our time, I would defer this discussion in answering any questions that all of you staff or the public might have. I believe this is a beautiful home. It captures all of the client's wish lists. The removal of the ash tree has been the single most difficult part of this application and has cost Fred and Kate close to eight months in considerable expense. Fred has had three arborists' tree root surveys and engaged several professionals to obtain approval for removal. Fred did considerable research in presentation of one of the most comprehensive tree studies I have ever seen personally. Our office has had to produce site and floor plans of theoretical designs that showed how the tree, the ash tree could be saved. This, the tree does have roots that extend 75 to 80 feet back towards the rear of the property and it's a shallow surface root system that would prevent any improvements to the rear yard with swimming pools or other structures, net alone a basement for the house. So we have, there are also several dead walnut trees, privates, apricots and plums. And right now, we're basically being required to plant 11 trees on the property. There will be a total of 15 trees on the property. Many of these grow to mature heights of 40 to 60 feet. And, you know, with, with the concerns of net zero energy and the no natural gas, you know, solar panels are really the way of the future. And this, a lot of this roof will be shaded by the size of these trees. Fred just feels, Fred and Kate both just feel that it's a lot of tree to ask to put on such a small property. So anyway, I will hand it over to Fred to discuss further and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Dervis, we need your audio.
How's that? Is that better?
There we are.
All right, thank you very much. So thank you, Andrew, and good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm glad we're able to have our new home reviewed by the planning commission. As some of you know from the documents in the application packet, I'm a surgeon at Stanford. For four years, I was one of the trauma surgeons. For the past 25 years, I've served as one of the primary breast cancer surgeons at Stanford. For seven years, I ran our clinical breast cancer program. My wife is also a physician and serves as the lead breast radiation oncologist in our breast cancer group. I lived in Menlo Park as an undergraduate between 1980 and 1981, as a surgical resident from 1985 to 1987, and on Middle Avenue since 1989. In the intervening years, I was out of the area. This covers a near 40-year period of living in and serving the community. When we started dating, my wife joked that I would only be happy if I could also be buried in Menlo Park. I wanted to thank Thomas Rogers, who routinely and thoughtfully sent emails for status checks on our project. That was greatly appreciated. I also wanted to thank Fatim Khan for her efforts to keep our architectural team and my family updated, often sending emails well after normal working hours. The development department team was also very helpful compiling records of home plans we wish to review. We appreciate the favorable nature of the staff review of our home plans. We spent a great deal of time on the details of the home, trying to make it attractive, functional for our family's needs. We've made efforts to obtain the extensive supportive feedback on our home, which is available in the attachment that was circulated. which is available in the attachment that was circulated. Andrew, I believe, will answer any questions about the home, but we're very excited about it. It, to some extent, helps fulfill some of the many needs that we have now for sheltering with two offices. So my wife and I can do our charting for our patients at night and on weekends for our three and four-year-old girls, as well as a room for family who want to visit, where they may not want to stay at hotels in the non-COVID area, where the cost of staying at the hotels nearby is quite expensive. So we also have been asked to replace seven heritage trees, as Andrew mentioned. Most of these are near end of life. In fact, some of the, two of the trees are walnut trees that are siblings to walnut trees that were removed at 1275 and 1295 Middle Avenue. And those properties were worked on in the past few years. I believe, I don't believe that there was anything specific asked. They were really truly dead. Ours are as close to dead. One of the branches of, one of the trees fell off and took out our power line one night and another branch fell off and unfortunately made a huge dent in my wife's car, which did not go over well. So for the seven heritage trees that we've been asked to replace, we've been asked to put in their place 11 heritage trees. We already have two heritage oak trees on our property. So as best that I can tell, it seems that we'll have a total of 13 heritage trees on a lot that's less than a quarter acre. We're a bit concerned, as Andrew mentioned, about the potential impact of so many trees on solar panels and power, solar power, as well as available sunlight for our property and our girls running around and back. So we would appreciate some flexibility on this, if at all possible. We have worked with our architect, Young & Borlik, to design a home that is well suited to today's world. As I mentioned, sheltering is addressed by the two offices. Help with our patient care duties. Fire risk is addressed by our decision to use stucco instead of wood siding, as well as sheet metal roofing instead of shingles or shake. So we thank you for your time and hope that you will allow us to take our plans to the next stage of building. This has been a long time in the making. Thank you. Kate, I don't know if you have any things you'd like to add?
Thank you. I would like to just add a couple of comments. I wanted, first of all, to thank Commissioner DeCarty and Commissioner Barnes for your comments earlier about equity. Certainly, it's a lot easier to buy a new home, but we love where we live and we'd like to redo it. And I also wanted to comment that both Fred and I, from where we are on Middle Avenue, can bike or walk to work. So while I know that that's not a big, you know, not really high on the radar for Menlo Park, it's high on the radar for Palo Alto as the traffic, commuter traffic going in and out of Stanford University and the medical center is significant. So we really appreciate our contribution to making a difference in that effort. And so that's why we're really excited to continue our efforts on Middle Avenue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the project team that want to speak? All right then, let's start with just some basic questions that might come up from the commissioners regarding the project before we move to public comment. Any commissioners with questions? Mr. Cale?
Thank you. I have some questions on the, about the architecture. And I'll mention that Andrew Young and myself are friends, but that does not have any reflection on the decision. Andrew, just wanted to clarify that the exterior is stucco, is that correct?
Can we make sure that Mr. Young's audio is released so he can join?
You want to send me yourself? I should be able to send me yourself. Let me unmute. Should I unmute?
If you click on the red microphone, it should turn.
Okay, there we go. Got it.
Thank you. Yes, yes, Larry, the whole place is smooth stucco metal trial finish.
Okay, I just wanted to verify because the typical roof detail calls for a different material. That detail also calls for, looks like a closed soffit with some kind of cove. But from what I can tell, the perimeter of the building has an open eave. Is that, which, which is correct? The detail I'm looking at is on a 2.3?
No, I'm sorry to say, I believe it is a closed, it is a closed eave. A closed soffit at eave. Yeah, very, very clean, simple. So we wouldn't see the rafter tails. It would be a stucco underside. So there, yeah, that detail there, 2.3, is a flat underside.
Is it stucco or is it one-by-four decking?
Oh, it's one-by-decking. Sorry.
Okay, in, in the exterior elevations, I see something at the eaves every four feet or so that looks like a rafter tail. Is that not supposed to be there?
No, that's, and sorry, could you flush ahead? Can I get access to this? Let me see the.
You have control of the mouse and keyboard. You can move wherever you want to go.
No, I believe that's, that's, it's just a, there's no, yeah, there's, there is, let me see, Jackie, just, oh. Open eaves. Sorry. I, which would you prefer?
I'm guessing that the, that the detail is incorrect and, and it's the open rafter tails.
Yeah, and I'm seeing from Jackie, who's been working with me, that she says, yes, it's open eaves.
Okay. And as far as the stucco on the front elevation, I, it looks like the columns are stucco as well as the, the low wall. Is that correct?
Yes.
How about the, the top, the top part of the, of the low bench? The seat part?
That could be, that could be a stone surface.
Okay.
More durable.
Okay. Second question is, you have a very nice rendering here. And from what it looks like, there's no trim around the windows, but the windows seem to be set rather deeply into the wall. Is that, is that correct? Are the, are the doors, or sorry, are the walls thick enough that the windows are recessed?
Yeah, they'd be recessed about four inches. Three to four inches. But yes, we would recess them in. Because we do actually, we're using the zip panel on the exterior of the building. So the whole panel gets an inch and a half of that foam. Once the building's built, then you got your structural plywood. Then we're coming back over with zip panel to get a better, in, you know, energy efficiency to the whole skin of the building. So the windows would be set deep onto the plywood. So, and then the stuck over that, so it's one and a half and then another three quarters. So you're probably about two and a half inches at least, two and five-eighths inches recessed.
Are the exterior walls two-by-sixes?
Yes.
And are the windows mounted to the exterior face of the plywood?
To the, yeah, to the exterior face of the plywood. And then the windows, then in that one and a half inch of zip, zip panel goes over that.
Okay. I, I guess my point is that the, the rendering looks really nice with the deep set windows that look like they're four to six inches back. So I'd like to keep that look, which is a very nice look for the house.
Yeah, no, I, I think we probably could get, we, well, it's going to be, yeah, we could probably get four inches. We can set them in two inches into the two-by-six framing. And then we'd have another two inches on top of that. Any further, we'd be going through the wall.
Okay. And regarding the ceiling heights, I see we have 10 foot six on the first floor and nine feet on the second floor. I'll just ask, how did you determine those heights?
Just basically wanting to, the upper floor can have vaulted ceilings. So, so the bedrooms have vaulted ceilings. And it was just to want to get a, a nice tall ceiling on the first floor. And, you know, and stay eight inches below the height limit.
Okay, and my last question is just a minor one. On the front elevation, on either side of the address 1285, I see a little box with an X through it and that also appears on the rear elevation. Is that, is that part of the building or is that just a drafting item?
You know, those are, those are just part of the drafting. I, so I'm sorry to say, we went through, we went through, I think, 10 different design variations with this. And, and so, and settled on this design. And I believe those are remnants of the prior craftsman style that we're going with. So there would be no beams projecting. It's just smooth, smooth stucco.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Sure thing.
All right, and any other questions from the commissioners? Mr. DeCarty?
This may be a question more for staff. I, I appreciate and hear you on your frustration and struggle with both the ash heritage tree removal in specific and the general heritage tree approach. In the time that you've been working on this project, I know the city has adopted a new heritage tree standard. And I just wanted to check with staff to see how that process worked and, and was that one of the issues at play? That there was an old heritage tree standard and then a new one? Or is this clearly the result of the new heritage tree process?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. So the issue that we had with the removal of the ash tree was not due to the new heritage tree ordinance, which came into effect in July. And we started reviewing this project much earlier on in the year. And we were trying to save the ash tree. And so we had the city arborists take a look at it and determine that it would be preferred to have the tree retained. Hence, there was a comprehensive evaluation done. We asked the applicant to, and the homeowners to take a look at it. Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Okay, sorry, things turned off on, on my end. So we had the property owners take a look at it to see if it would, if they were able to retain the tree or not. So it took some time for the property owners to actually get multiple arborists involved, take a look at it and submit those reports to us so that the city arborists can take a look to see if indeed, you know, the tree could be retained or would it need to be removed? So the applicant actually made comprehensive steps. As Andrew mentioned earlier on, Fred did provide us with a big research package in, as to how it's not possible to retain an ash tree. And also Fred and Kate went out and spoke to multiple of their neighbors to garner support for the removal, to see if any of the neighbors had any objections or not. Additionally, given the fact that in March Shelter in Place had taken effect, that sort of also delayed the process as well. Then getting all the meetings set in place and having this move forward. And then the new ordinance sort of took effect. We did keep in consideration that we would have this particular project still be looked at with the old ordinance and not the new, given the fact that they had submitted prior to the new ordinance taking effect.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. Zipper now.
That answers your question, Commissioner?
Yeah.
I have a follow-up then, Ms. Khan. How is it that we would require 11, the planting of 11 heritage trees, regardless of the amount of tree removal on a buildable site? Is this, is it that there's a requirement two-for-one that we simply aren't, aren't able to adjudicate? Or are there some special conditions that perhaps we're not, we're not aware of?
Sure, I believe some of them had a two is to one ratio of replacement. And the plans have been looked at extensively by the city arborist, who has reviewed the proposed replacement trees and numbers.
So this is based firmly on our code and it is, it, it's a requirement under both the previous tree ordinance and the current one to replace at that level on a, a lot of the size?
Correct. It has been reviewed with both the lens of the new and old heritage tree ordinance.
All right, and then just finally, am I right that the planning commission has some, some leeway in terms of how the, of how much tree removal is embodied in the use permit? Is that true? Or is, or is that solely up to the EQC?
With the new ordinance, I'm a little unclear at the moment, so I defer it to our planning liaison.
All right, thank you. Ms. Sandomeyer?
Yeah, so under the new ordinance, there's no, the replacement is based on the value of the tree. So it's not one-to-one or two-to-one. So just as a clarification there. And also the approvals are done prior to the planning commission. So it's done by the city arborist and then there's an appeal period. So they don't go to the EQC. And these approvals are done, so it's not something the planning commission has discretion on at this point. So it's a little different from the previous process.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. DeCarty?
So thank you, Chair Riggs. Just to clarify then, this started in the old one, but has ended in the new one. So to Ms. Sandomeyer, we are, we are approaching this one as it's come to us, coming through the new heritage tree process. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The approvals were done under the new ordinance. And that's how it's come to the planning commission. That's correct.
Okay, and then I just have one quick question to the property owners. How long have you owned the property?
Since December 1988.
So that, that ash tree was not a heritage tree when you bought the property? Is that a fair?
I don't, I don't recall. I don't recall. It was a while ago.
A long time ago. I appreciate it. So I mostly just, I, I appreciate you letting us go on these questions. I have a lot of sympathy for property owners in Menlo Park who end up bearing the burden of making us a tree city USA. And appreciate that you've worked through this. It's a help to your neighbors in the community that you've gone through it. But recognize that the way we have treated heritage trees does put an excess burden on property owners who happen to have a lot of heritage trees and just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you for that comment.
The applicant would like to speak, Mr. Dervis, Dr. Dervis, excuse me.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. Yeah, you know, and I appreciate the comments, you know, have looked at these, have looked at these. I'm sorry, that's my daughter banging on our door. Have looked at these. I'm sorry, it's going to be all pandemonium if I don't litter in.
I'll get it.
All right, come here, Christine.
I just want to say goodnight to you.
Oh, thank you sweetheart. I'll say goodnight to you too. This is not staged, I promise. Okay. Can you say hello? Okay. All right. Um, you know, the, I'm a little confused just, um, looking over the ordinances a few times. It seemed that it pretty clearly stated, uh, and states that the replacement is a one to one, um, for, it's a, it's a one to one replacement or, um, okay, Christina, go up to bed now sweetheart. Thank you. It's a one to one replacement for trees that are removed for homeowners. If it's a development, then it's a two to one replacement of policy. And that's stated, I think, pretty clearly in the, uh, ordinance. And the second thing is that the, the trees that we're replacing, um, are not 40 foot trees or 60 foot trees. The trees we're replacing are 15 feet. So I'm a little puzzled by the, how we get from seven to 11. And some of these things frankly are, they're, they're frankly fairly unsightly. So their criteria for them being heritage trees when they've been dead and removed from adjacent properties. And some of them are heritage trees because they're more than 15 inches a foot off the ground and then they branch into often multiple directions. So I'm just wondering, did I misread something in the, uh, the ordinance where it's a one to one for homeowners and two to one for developers? Thank you.
This is a question, uh, Corinna, did you want to field this?
Excuse me. Christina? Can you head upstairs to mommy?
Yes, I believe this, um, application, when it came in, we still had the old ordinance, but then it was reviewed by, um, as the process on, it was reviewed by the planning management. And because of, um, the way it was progressing, then it was reviewed under the new ordinance because it had taken effect at that time when the application was still pending. And so in the previous ordinance, it was one to one, um, for a single family homes and then two to one for commercial or mixed use developments. And now there's a different system, which is based on the value of the tree. So it's not a specific ratio. It has to do with the value of the tree that's being removed and the value of the trees that are replacing it, tree or trees.
So forgive me for pressing on this, uh, if nothing else, it would clarify my understanding. But I thought that once you make an application, uh, once the application is deemed complete, uh, or, or is it actually, once an app, yes, once an application is deemed complete and during the process that, um, the applicable codes are already determined at that point. And that we don't go back and update codes on a project that is already, you know, in, in the 10th or 11th hour. Um, was, was this, uh, project resubmitted? Is that, is that why it ended up with the new tree ordinance?
Um, I'm not sure when the heritage tree removal permits were applied for. I don't know if Fatine has some more information on that. Um,
Yes. So initially, the heritage tree removal for the ash tree was submitted under the old ordinance. And there were a few trees that were being shown to be removed, but were not, uh, had not been applied at the time. So by the time the, they were applied, the new ordinance had taken effect, uh, which was this July. So we had some heritage trees under the old, some under the new. And it was then decided that we would follow the new heritage tree ordinance for all the trees that were being proposed to be removed.
All right. So the tree removals are a separate track from the overall use permit application?
Yes.
Uh, okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Uh, if there are no more questions from commissioners, uh, I think we should, um, invite the public to comment. This is the point in a project when we invite the public to, um, via the go-to webinar site, indicate that, uh, a comment would, uh, that someone would like to make a comment. And you do this by looking for the hand icon that's on, on the left side of that, um, uh, bar that's on the right of your screen. If you click on that hand icon, that tells staff real time that you would like to make a comment. So if anyone is out there and would like to make a comment, please do so. Please click on that icon now. And, uh, Mr. Tapia is with us. I'll ask if he has any sign of life in the, um, planning universe.
If I may, Chair?
Oh, Mr. Pruder.
Good evening, Chair Riggs. Uh, yes. So, uh, Sir Tapia is not available this evening. So I have been serving as, uh, the clerk in his place, uh, for much of the meeting. And so I will be helping for the rest of the way. I made this announcement earlier, uh, before you arrived. But, uh, yes, uh, as, uh, you'd say, it stated, um, if anyone could raise their hands if they'd like to speak. I'm not seeing any comments, but I'm happy to wait for a few more moments. Uh, at this time, we have nothing, uh, on screen.
All right. And I think we'll wait another, uh, 15 seconds or something. Well, someone might try to find that icon. In our next version of go-to webinar, we should add the icon pulpit, don't you think?
Could I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
So I was just curious with the whole new ADU ordinance and the JADU ordinance. Um, if, if, if the clients would like to come and add a JADU to the house at some later date, does that need to go back through planning commission?
No, it does not.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, um, I'm trusting Ms. Sandoymire, you'll correct me if I, if I spoke incorrectly there. All right. Seeing, uh, seeing no requests for, uh, to make a public comment. Uh, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to commissioners for quite further questions, comments, et cetera, on this project. Mr. Kale?
Thank you. Um, before I start, unfortunately, I'm about to lose, um, my computer. Is there a phone number that I could call into to complete the meeting? To, for the staff?
There's a number on the screen. So the six, um, 631. And I can promote you. Got it?
All right. No, I don't. 631?
631-992-3221. And then the code is 123224283. And once you get in, I can promote you back to, um, um, kind of less.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Um, I did want to offer some thoughts on the project. So, um, I think it's a, a very well-done project. Um, it's, it's big. It's got seven bedrooms and at least eight bathrooms. Um, but overall, there's an, uh, an, uh, an elegant simplicity to it in terms of the massing and the materials and the detailing. I appreciate that the window depths will be, uh, at least four inches, especially at the front. Um, it is a little tall, although compared to its neighbor to the right, it seems proportional. Um, ideally, I'd like to see the 10.6 on the first floor reduced to 10 feet. And the last comment is the, uh, the columns at the front being all stucco. I think it would help to make those more of an accent material, like a wood or something. Um, at least if it's not stucco, I think that would help. Uh, but I think the project is easy, easy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other comments? All right. Seeing that, oh, Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I too think this is a project that's easy to support. And I also just want to, uh, uh, acknowledge the extensive outreach to neighbors that was included in the packet. That is something that has been important for us and has been not even in the past. And, um, it looks like you went to, uh, uh, great lengths to get, uh, that feedback. Uh, and that's helpful to see.
Thank you.
Um, all right. And seeing no other comments, I'll just add simply that, uh, I agree with the, uh, previous comment makers. I would also, um, like to take a straw poll because I think we can do at least that much. How many commissioners would like to recommend to council that, that this level of, um, response to tree removal, uh, it appears to be burdensome. And that perhaps the ordinance was not intended on smaller, single-family lots to have this effect. Um, are there any who would like to support a non-binding statement to that effect? Um, maybe a signal by hands would, would serve as a straw poll? All right. I'm not seeing any particular interest in that. Um,
Oh, Michael Dorn.
Mr. Dorn? All right. So, um, perhaps, uh, a- as a sidebar, we might, um, or I might discuss this offline, up to three of us, I think, and can speak on the issue. I am sorry to hear about, uh, both the extent of the process and the result. Um, then I do hope we can do better in the future. Um, so, uh, Mr. Riggs?
I'd just like to, to flag, I, I can appreciate your sentiment, Chair Riggs. I, but, uh, and I appreciate the ask for a sidebar for up to three commissioners, which of course can happen. Uh, but if, uh, before we did anything along these lines, I think it, it might behoove us to actually get a staff report on exactly how they are utilizing the new heritage tree process, how they envision our role. So that we all have the same level of understanding of the current situation, uh, before we make assumptions about what needs to happen.
Uh, that is a wise comment and I appreciate it. All right. At this point, I'll look, oh, Mr. Mr. Dorn?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to clarify that I was raising my hand earlier because I wanted to speak and not because I was supporting the straw poll. Uh, I agree in general with Commissioner DeCarty. I think if we're going to discuss this, it needs to be on the agenda. Actually, I don't think it's appropriate to do a straw poll in this topic in the middle of considering this application.
Um, all right. Uh, perhaps so. That, that's also something that we might, uh, think on further. All right. So moving on, uh, we have two indications of support. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Kale?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the project as presented in the staff report.
All right. And, um, do we have a second? Mr. DeCarty?
Happy to second that.
Thank you.
And with that, um, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please simply signify with your hands and I will read off the results. All right. So, uh, I have Commissioners Barnes, DeCarty, Doran, Kale, Tate and Riggs. Uh, did I miss anybody? Um, so, uh, we have a unanimous approval. Congratulations, Doctor.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Yes, thanks very much for your time this evening.
All right. That concludes public hearing item F3. We'll move on to F4. Oh, I'm sorry. We don't have enough for. We move on to regular business, which is item G1. This is a determination of substantial conformance at 445 Oak Court. This is a project that has been before us, I believe, more than once. Uh, this is a review of a staff determination that changes, of changes to the exterior trim, accessory dwelling unit door and garage door that are in substantial conformance with previous approvals. Uh, a commission member has asked that this be brought to a live hearing in order to discuss. And is this Ms. Maedor?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. Um, so yes, this is a conformance memo that now is in front of you because it was requested to be pulled for review. One thing I wanted to clarify that the, um, staff report briefly mentions is that the second unit, based on the new state law, is not, um, would not be under review here. So any action, like if you make any action to, um, have the project go through a use permit revision, say that would just, um, be applied to the main house and garage and not, um, the second unit, just based on the new state law.
All right. Thank you very much for that clarification. Any comments or observations, uh, as to, um, what might need, um, what might need consideration from fellow commissioners? All right, Mr. Kale?
I'm sorry. Was that a question for staff or for commissioners?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's for any commissioner who would like to indicate something that is worthy of our review.
Yes, I'd like to. Um, so I was the commissioner that requested this be brought to the hearing. Um, I, I drove by this house, uh, a few, like maybe a month ago, and, uh, I was surprised by the changes that have taken place. Um, I can appreciate, you know, that COVID has made things more difficult per the, the, the letter from the owner. But there's been a lot of revisions and I think, um, each one has been, each one has made the project a little bit less than it could, could be. Uh, in particular, the, the arch door that was originally approved is sorely missed and going from, uh, wood windows to fiberglass windows is a, is another downgrade. Um, I think the, the added trim around the windows that's in this, um, revision is, uh, is unnecessary and is really entirely inappropriate for this style of house. The other changes to the garage, I think, are, are okay. But the, the window trim, and especially the shape of it with its little peaked arch is just, belongs on a different building entirely. Uh, so I just think it was one revision too many. And, uh, I, I can't support this and I would vote against it if we have that opportunity.
Um, any other comments? And, um, I'll go to Ms. Maedor to ask, um, for a use permit revision, I'm sorry, for a, um, substantial conformance, uh, discussion. Uh, do we take public comment?
So I think I'm going to need Karina to jump in. Um, I, I thought we didn't, but maybe she can clarify if that's the case or not.
I think it would be useful to open public comment, um, just in case anyone wants to speak on the item.
All right, then let's do that. Um, so, uh, if anyone is, uh, attending this go-to meeting and would like to comment on 445 Oak Court's, requested revisions, you can look at the right side of your screen. you can look at the right side of your screen and on the, I believe it's the left edge of the dropdown, uh, you will find a hand icon, a raised hand. If you click on that icon, that will tell staff that you would like to make a comment regarding this, uh, project review. If you would do that now, that would allow us to, uh, connect you to speak. So, Mr. Pruder? Any word from space?
Thank you, Chair Riggs. At this moment, we do not have any hands raised, uh, but I'm happy to wait for a few moments more to see if we do get a response from a member of the public.
I remember that we had, um, two or three very interested neighbors back some years ago when this was first proposed.
Um, while we're waiting, I also mentioned that the applicant did provide, um, a PDF showing kind of renderings of the original design. Um, the design after use permit revision and then the current one, um, if that would be helpful to you. I know that Commissioner Kale had requested, um, some drawings of that as well.
If you had that to put on screen, the original use permit approval, that would be great. And there was an earlier front door, is that right?
Correct. Yeah. If we can get that document back up, I think the second page may show three different variations.
It has the control of the mouse and keyboard. Go ahead. You can maneuver.
All right. Thank you. This is very helpful. Um, while the, uh, main entry door is feta complete, uh, um, lack of window trim is, uh, is notable. In the, uh, traditional, um, way of, I, I guess it would be Spanish colonial.
If I may, through the chair?
Mr. Pruder?
Uh, sorry, Chair Riggs. I just wanted to let you know at this time, there are still no comments, no hands raised, no requests to speak from members of the public. And if you'd like to continue, uh, you may consider closing the public comment period at your leisure.
Thank you. I appreciate the news and, uh, we will close the public comment period. Um, and bring it back to the commission. Uh, are there any, um, other comments or responses to the window trim issue that's been brought up? And that, and I believe the, the front entry was also part of that comment. All right. I don't, I'm not hearing any, um, Mr. Kale, would you like to make a motion?
Um, yes, I will. Um, just to, for clarification, um, would this be a denial of the use permit?
This, I believe this would be a finding of non-conformance with the granted use permit. Or alternatively, it could be a finding of substantial conformance with.
All right. Then, um, I'll make a motion, uh, for a finding of non-conformance with respect to the, um, use, the approved use permit in terms of the added window trim, but not for the other two elements, which I believe are the painted door. And someone help me out. I'm not sure what the plus, the third one is.
It was the, uh, ADU, which would not actually be in our purview.
Correct. Thank you. That's my motion.
All right. And do I have a second? All right. If I, seeing no second, uh, then the motion dies. Um, do I have an alternative motion? Mr. Barnes, Mr. Doran? All right, um, I'll go ahead and move, uh, to make the finding of substantial conformance with the previous use permit. However, I will note that, uh, in my heart, I have to agree with Mr. Kale's comments. Um, I just don't happen to feel that the changes are sufficient, uh, are, uh, are of the nature that I would prevent them from happening, given that they appear to have been a response to a construction need. Uh, so mine is a motion to find, uh, substantial conformance. Do I have a second? Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I'll second and also echo your sentiment, Chair Riggs. Um, the original sure looked really good. And I appreciate Mr. Kale's comments, but I, I will second the motion, um, along the same lines.
All right. Thank you. And if we have no further comments, uh, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All those, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands and I will read, read you out by your alphabetical name. So in approval, I have Mr. Barnes, Mr. DeCarty, Mr. Doran, Ms. Tate. All those opposed? Mr. Kale? I will, um, uh, having made the motion, I should have raised my hand and indicate, uh, uh, approval of the motion. So the motion passes five-to-one with Mr. Kale descend, dissenting for the, uh, finding of, uh, substantial conformance. Mr. Barnes? Uh, microphone?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, now that this is wrapped up, I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Kale for his attention to this. Uh, this, and I will say as a matter of history, this project has been just so problematic in terms of repeatedly coming back and you know, the, the, the preponderance of previous actions has shown this project to have made changes which were, uh, deliberate as opposed to accidental. And, um, in this case, I, I'm going to, I'm giving, I have given the, the applicant better than the doubt. But, um, we've seen it over and over again, and for some reason, this project seems to be repeatedly problematic. And, um, just with that said, I thank you, Mr. Kale, for bringing this forward. And I couldn't go with your motion, but, um, it was worthy to point it out. Thank you.
Agreed from this, uh, from this chair. So, uh, the project is found in substantial conformance and, uh, congratulations, Mr. Nguyen. And that brings to a close our regular business and we move on to information items. Ms. Sander Meyer, I see we have a couple of meetings in December.
So with the upcoming, um, Thanksgiving holiday, the next meeting is December seventh, which is three weeks from tonight. Um, so we don't have those agendas finalized yet, but we do have a number of projects, um, that we're looking at for both of the December meetings. Um, that's it for my informational items, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sander? All right, uh, with that, um, it looks like we have completed our agenda and, um, we will adjourn as of nine twenty-six PM. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chair Riggs. Thank you, Vice Chair Doran. Exceptional job stepping in.
Thank you, Michael. Comments to follow.
Be well.